Welcome for today's session. I'm Diana, I'm a sleep expert, menopause coach and also yoga teacher and breathwork teacher. And I today want to introduce you in a few exercises that can help you to oxygenate your brain, oxygenate your cells, boost your immune system. And also it's gonna be very beneficial for your digestion. And it gonna calm the mind also and if you have any anxiety, any stress, any depression, it can be also beneficial. You start always with full breath, yogic breath or three-part defragmatic breathing. You use the abdomen, then you use the rib cage, the interse- intersectal muscles. And then you extend up to the clavicle and to the neck. So to start, you just put one hand on the belly. It just when you inhale, expand the belly and then exhale, contract. So let's begin, inhale, exhale. Inhale, exhale. Inhale, push, exhale. Inhale, 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 exhale. Then you can put one hand on the chest. You're gonna expand the chest and contract the chest in same way. Inhale deep, extend, expand the chest, exhale, contract. And do that together with the belly and chest. Now we're gonna extend to the, up to the neck, up to the clavicle and the neck. We're gonna start again with the belly, push the hands with the belly, then expand the chest. Expand the chest and contract it and little bit extend to the neck and to the top of the crown. Let's begin, inhale. And hold. And exhale through the nose. Inhale through the nose, expand the belly and chest, extend to the neck and crown of the head. And hold. And exhale, release through the nose. Contract and then full inhale. Hold. And full exhale. Inhale full. Exhale. Inhale, expand with belly and chest, extend to the top of the crown. Hold. And exhale through the nose, contract the chest and the belly. And again inhale with the, push the hand with the belly, then expand the chest, extend to the neck and crown of the head. And hold. Exhale, release through the nose, longer. Inhale. Hold. Exhale. Inhale. Hold. Exhale, contract the chest and belly. Inhale, expand with the belly and chest. Hold. Exhale, contract. Release, pause and then inhale full. Pause, hold. Exhale, contract the chest and belly, release. Inhale. Hold. Exhale. 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 Inhale. Hold. Exhale, contract through the nose, release. And again inhale, expand with the belly and chest to the top of the neck, through the neck to the head. Hold the breath. Exhale through the nose. Inhale again. Hold. Exhale. Inhale. Expand, hold. And contract, release through the nose. Inhale with the belly and chest. Expand. Exhale, release through the nose. Inhale full. Hold. Inhale full. Expand and hold. Exhale. Release, you can release the hands on the, your lap, in your thigh, on your knee with the chin mudra. To connect you with universe. Then just breathe normal few times, just observe the breath, feel how you feel. And then you're gonna just inhale normal, exhale with the belly forcefully like that. We're gonna contract the, pull the belly towards the neck, towards the back, towards the spine, exhale, push up. So let's go on 10 times, you're gonna do that 10 times with the belly. It's called kapavabati if you have blood pressure, high blood pressure, hypervent- you can have heart disease or you are pregnant or you have period, it's better not to use this breathing specifically. But it's very beneficial for calm the mind, for digestion and for so many other things. So let's do 10 times, inhale normal. And then exhale forcefully with the belly. Release, relax, gonna do 10 times again, gonna do the three rounds by 10 times again. Inhale normal, exhale, belly towards the back and pull forcefully. Inhale, exhale, inhale, exhale, okay, inhale, exhale. Okay, and put one hand again on the belly to feel the movement of the belly. Inhale normal, exhale. Okay, breathe normal, relax, release, observe the breath. Pause before the last round of 10 times. Again, one hand on the belly, inhale normal, exhale forcefully, you're gonna do that forcefully 10 times. Let's begin. Okay, hands in chin mudra on the lap, breathe normal through the nose, breathe normal, gentle, just observe the breath. Just how you feel, notice a sensation, just breathe normal, gentle. No controlling, no manipulating, just normal breathing. And then can start deepen the breath again with diaphragm. It just deepen the breath from the pelvic floor and belly up to the top of the crown and all the way back. Just breathe normal. Just little bit more deeper. And you can pause between inhalation and exhalation. Inhale. Pause. Exhale. Pause. Inhale. Pause. And exhale. Pause. Inhale. Pause. Exhale. Pause. And now we're gonna do the next exercise, the third exercise for today, it's called bastrika. You also inhale normal, exhale little bit forcefully through the nose. Gonna include our hands, it gonna look like this. Okay, get ready, hands up to the ceiling or to the sky, you're gonna do 10 times. You're gonna do again three rounds by 10 times. Okay, release, relax, deep, this deep, defragmatic three-part yogic breath. Just breathe normal with the belly, extend to the top of the crown. Hold the breath. Exhale normal through the nose, release. Again inhale. Expand the belly and chest to the top of the crown and hold. And release, exhale. Again, one more time, inhale full with the belly and chest, expand to the top of the crown and hold. Exhale, release. Ready for next round of bastrika, hands up, inhale, exhale. Hands in chin mudra in your lap, breathe three times, defragmatic yogic full breath. Inhale with the belly, expand to the chest and hold. Exhale, release through the nose, contract the chest and belly. Inhale through the belly and chest, expand to the top of the crown. And hold. Exhale, release. One more time inhale. Expand and hold. Exhale, release. It is the third round of 10 times bastrika, hands up. Exhale, release, hands in chin mudra, hands in your lap and then just breathe normal through the nose. Inhale full, expand to the top of the crown. Hold the breath. Exhale, release. Inhale full with the belly and chest, extend to the top of the crown. And hold. Exhale through the nose, release, contract the chest and belly. One more time inhale full. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. And then you're gonna do the alternate nostril breathing 10 times. You're gonna use our hand, right hand, gonna fold the middle fingers and index. You're gonna use the thumbs and the pinky one to cause our nostril. You always start from the left and you finish through the left. You can hold our right hand that you use for cause the nostril with the left hand. You can cause the inhale normal, pause the right. Again inhale. And exhale through the left. Then pause the left, open the right, inhale. Cause the right, exhale through the left. Inhale through the left. Pause the left, exhale right. Inhale right. Cause the right, exhale left. Inhale left. Pause the left, exhale right. Inhale right. Pause the right, exhale left. Inhale left. Pause the left, exhale right. Inhale right. Pause the right, exhale left. Inhale left. Pause the left, exhale right. Inhale right. Pause the right, exhale left. Inhale left. Pause the left, exhale right. Inhale right. Pause the right, exhale left. Inhale left. Pause the left, exhale right. Inhale right. Pause the right, exhale left. Inhale left. Pause the left, exhale right. Inhale right. Pause the right, exhale left. Inhale left. Pause the left, exhale right. Inhale right. Pause the right, exhale left. And release the hands in chin mudra again in your lap, in your knee and just breathe normal. Just observe the breath, observe how you breathe, gentle breathing, normal breathing. You can cause the eyes really tune inside, connect with the breath. And now if you want, you can lay down on your back, in your sofa, in your bed, in your yoga mat, in down on the earth. You're gonna do the final bodies khan meditation, breathing meditation for final relaxation. And just recap our session. So make sure you wear something comfortable, make sure you eliminate any distraction, your phone is on the silence. And if you have any noise outside the room, outside the building or your house, you just notice them, observe them. Be observer of the what's happen around you, but connect with the breath and focus on the breath. So you can notice what's going on outside, but you use your breath as anchor to bring this to the breath in the present moment all the time. Whenever you feel that your thoughts is scattered, you start thinking or distracted, you just bring your awareness, the connection to the breath and focus on the breath. Now bring your attention inside your body, notice the noise, maybe the sound inside the body, the blood circulation, the heartbeat. Notice how you feel, how you breathe, the quality of the breath, the quantity of the breath. Your eyes is closed, you invited a relaxation, your body feel heavy, your head feel heavy. Feel the heaviness of the body, heaviness of the bone. Again, you can make three, self kappa, three intention or I am statement. Can be I'm relaxed, I'm in peace, I'm healthy. I'm lovable, I'm release the need of control or I'm just in present moment. I'm here and now, whatever you choose to be, just you're gonna repeat this three times, this I am statement. Here you're gonna start from the toes to the head, three rounds and then from head to the toes. Three rounds and you start with the right feet, right toes, right big toes. Fourth toe, third toe, second toe, the small toe, relax. Feel the relaxation, feel the white, white to gold, white. Penetrate your toes, your source of the food, your right foot and relax any tissue, any muscles. Feel the relaxation of the cells, your right foot relax. You can breathe there, direct your breathing and awareness exactly in the part that I mentioned. It just imagine how this part relax more and more. And source of the foot is the right foot, it's relaxed, the top of right foot is relaxed and your right ankle relaxed. All the right foot is relaxed now. You breathe there three times. And slowly bring awareness and relax your right ankle. Breathe there three times. Your whole part of the right leg relax, right calf muscles, the bottom of the right calf muscle, the top of the right whole part of the leg relax. Imagine this white or golden white again penetrate from the toes all the way in the right foot ankle and calf muscles going up to the kneecap. But right now you focus on the whole part of the right leg and breathe there. Three full breath directed towards the whole right part of the leg. Relax any tissue, any muscle in there itself. And bring awareness in relaxation, your right kneecap, the bottom of the kneecap, the top of the kneecap relax. And breathe three times. Slowly bring awareness, this white, golden white penetrate your right hip, right upper part of the right leg. Now you relax from the toes to the hip. All the leg up and down. Imagine this golden or white, white from the toes to the hip going up and down. Now breathe towards your hip three times, the top of the hip, the bottom of the hip relax. All the right leg is relaxed now. Right hip is relaxed, breathe there three times towards the right hip, right joint, right ground. Your right part of the torso relax now, breathe three times there. And begin to relax your right shoulder. Focus on the right shoulder, direct the white or golden white towards the right shoulder. And begin to breathe towards the right shoulder. Imagine every tissue, any muscle inside the right shoulder relax. You start from the top of the right arms to the bottom of your right hand. Relax the right biceps, right upper palm of the arm, breathe three times there. Here the relaxation. You can feel any tingling, any other sensation, you can get little bit more relaxed when you go deeper and deeper. You can fall asleep eventually, but don't worry, you can wake up after. You're going in the really deep state in the relaxation right now. Now relax your right elbow, breathe three times towards the right elbow. Again white or golden white going from the shoulder to the elbow. And now going to the whole part of the right arm, relax any tissue and cells there, any muscles. The right whole part of the arm, breathe there three times. And you can notice how you feel, your right leg and your right arm relaxing now. Relax the right wrist, right palm, right, all the fingers of your right hand. Or relax all the fingers one by one, breathe there, breathe towards the palm, breathe towards the hand. And now golden white from the shoulder, right shoulder, all the way down to your fingers, right fingers. Relax any tissue, any muscle, breathe there three times. Now all the right leg and right arm is relaxed, you will begin with the left big toe. The fourth toe, the third toe, the second one, the pinky one on the left foot. Your left foot now is beginning to relax. Your source of the foot relaxes, bottom of the foot is relaxed and top of the foot is relaxed. Breathe there three times. Bring awareness, relax your left ankle, three times breathe, breathe towards the left ankle. Then relax the whole part of the left leg, the left calf muscles, the top of the left leg, the bottom of the left leg relax. Golden white or white, white penetrate from the toes to the, all the way up to calf muscle. Relax any tissue and muscle, breathe there three times. And relax your kneecap and bottom of the kneecap and top of the kneecap, breathe three times. Relax now your left hip from the kneecap to the left thigh, from the kneecap to the hip, left thigh is relaxed. Imagine the white, white or golden white penetrate from the toes to the, all the way to the left hip. Relax any tissue and muscles, three times breathe towards the left thigh. Now relax the left hip. Now relax the torso. Both left hip and right hip is relaxed, right leg and left leg is relaxed. Relax the left part of the torso, breathe there. You begin to relax the left shoulder. Imagine the golden white or white, white penetrate in your left shoulder, relax any tissue, any muscle. And take a three deep breath, direct to the left shoulder. Now begin to relax the left upper arm. Left biceps, direct your breath there three times. Begin to relax the left elbow. Three breath towards the left elbow. Slowly bring awareness and breath, relax left, whole part of the left arm. Here relax the left wrist, left palm, left hand. Left fingers, all the fingers of the left hand, one by one, relax now. The palm, the top of the left hand. Imagine every part of the body that I mentioned relaxing completely. Now all the left arm is relaxed also, your right arm is relaxed, your right leg is relaxed, your left leg is relaxed. Begin to relax your walk back. Begin to relax the, your wall back. And direct three deep breath there. And begin slowly move towards the wall, the middle part of the back, relax the middle part of the back. And feel the heaviness of the body again, relax the upper part of the back, three breath. So all the spine is relaxed, all the back of the neck begin to relax now, imagine golden white, white, white penetrate, and the back of the neck relax. The back of the head, the back of the neck, all attention and breath is there now. Now you relax there, on top of the ne, the head. Your crown chakra and begin to relax the forehead, your third eye. Concentrate in the middle in the forehead, imagine the purple white penetrate in the, from the forehead all the way down to your toes and breathe there in the middle in the forehead, breathe. You're gonna align the chakra in the same time when you relax the body. This energetic channel in our body. And gonna relax the muscle of the face, your eyes. The space between the eyebrow, relax the left eyebrow, the right eyebrow, relax the left eye, the right, right eye. Relax the nose, relax the left chin, the right chin, relax the jaw, the chin. Relax your tongue gently touching your palate, relax inside your mouth, all the face now is relaxed. You begin to relax the neck, in, in front of the neck in your trout chakra. Imagine the buis there. It's slowly going down, you relax the left side of the torso, the right side of the torso. The left collarbone, the right collarbone. Relax the rib cage, relax your, feel actually not the relaxation, but mainly imagine the green light around your heart, relaxing. If you the breath rising forward there in the heart. Open little bit more your heart, connect to your higher self. Then breathe towards your abdomen and belly, your sacral chakra, you, imagine the yellow white there. There relax the area below your belly, the second chakra. And finally relax your pelvic floor and your root chakra, imagine the red light there. Pelvic muscle is relaxed, your belly is relaxed, your abdomen, your chest. The front side of the torso relax now, and the backside of the torso relax. You complete the first round of our body breathing scan, scan meditation. You're gonna now, now begin the second round. You're gonna start again with the right big toe, the fourth toe, the third toe, the second and the pink, the pinky one. Relax all the toes of the right foot. Relax the top of the foot, the bottom of the foot, all the right foot is relaxed, three breath. Relax the right ankle, right heel. Begin to bring awareness of the wall part of the right leg, relax right calf muscle. The top of the right leg and bottom of the right leg relax, relax. Three breath. Relax the right kneecap, on bottom of the kneecap, the top of the kneecap, three breath. Relax the right thigh, the top of the right leg, the bottom of the right, upper part of the leg, relax. Relax the right hip, three breath. Relax the right side of the torso. Relax the right shoulder, right upper arm, right wall part of the arm. Right hand. You begin to relax the left foot, the left big toe, the fourth toe, the third toe, the second and the pinky one. All the toes of the left foot relax now. Begin to relax the le, the source of the foot, the bottom of the foot and the top of the foot, all the left foot is relaxed now. And breathe towards the left ankle, a left heel, relax. And relax the wall part of the left leg, the left calf muscle, the top of the left leg, the bottom of the left leg is relaxed, three breath. Relax the left kneecap, bottom of the kneecap and top of the kneecap. Relax the left thigh, the top of the left, upper part of the leg and bottom of the upper part of the leg, three breath. Relax the left hip, and all the left leg is relaxed. Begin to relax the left upper arm, left shoulder, left biceps. Relax the left, wall part of the left arm. Left wrist, the left hand, left palm, left fingers, all the fingers of the left hand relax. Begin to relax the wall back. The middle back. The upper back. The back of the neck. The back of the head. All the spine is relaxed. The right arm is relaxed, the left arm is relaxed, the right hand is relaxed, the left hand is relaxed. Right leg is relaxed, right source of the foot is relaxed, left leg is relaxed, left source of the foot is relaxed. Wall back is relaxed, middle back is relaxed, upper back is relaxed. Your back of the neck and head relax. Bring relaxation in top of the head, and bring your attention and focus in the middle of the forehead again, and breathe there. Relax the space between the left eyebrow and right eyebrow, left eye and right eye. Left eye pocket, right eye pocket, nose, left nostril, right nostril. Left chin, right chin, your cheek, your mouth, your tongue. All the face is relaxed, all the head is relaxed. The front of the neck begin to relax. Your upper chest, rib cage begin to relax. The left collarbone, the right collarbone, the left part of the torso, the right part of the torso. The middle side of the rib cage, the wall part of the rib cage relax. Your abdomen begin to relax, your belly relax. And notice your breath again, how you breathe, relax your pelvic floor. The second round of your body scan is complete, you'll begin the last one, the third one, the final one. Scanning body meditation from the toes to the heads. And again, you start with the right leg. Source of the right foot, the top of the right foot, all the right foot relax. And just breathe there. All the toes relax, the big toe, the fourth toe, the third toe, the second and the pinky one. Imagine all the tissue, the muscle relax, breathe. Relax the right ankle, three breath towards the right ankle. Right wall part of the leg. Bottom of the leg, the top of the leg, right calf muscle relax, three breath. Begin to relax the right kneecap, on top of the kneecap, the bottom of the kneecap, three breath. Relax the right thigh. Breathe there. And relax the right hip. Begin to relax the right side of the torso. And begin to relax the right shoulder. Begin to relax the right upper arm. Your right wall part of the arm relax. Your wrist relax, your right palm and hand relax. All the fingers of the right hand relax, relax them all one by one. And then slowly begin to relax the left foot, the source of the foot, the bottom of the foot. The big toe, the fourth toe, the third toe, the second toe, the pinky one, all the source of the foot is relaxed, the bottom of the foot, the top of the foot relax, left ankle relax. Left wall part of the left leg relax, the bottom of the leg, the top of the leg, left calf muscle. Begin to relax the left kneecap, the bottom of the kneecap, the top of the kneecap. Relax the left thigh, left hip. You begin to relax a wall back, your wall back is completely relaxed, three breath. Your middle back is completely relaxed. Your upper back is relaxed. All the back is relaxed, the spine is relaxed, begin to relax the back of the neck and back of the head. And relax the forehead again, the space between the eyes, the nose, the cheek, the chin, the mouth. And front side of the neck. Upper chest. The middle chest. The wall, upper abdomen, the wall abdomen, the belly. The pelvic floor. So the front side of the torso is relaxed, the backside of the torso is relaxed. The front side of the neck is relaxed, the backside of the neck is relaxed. The front side of your head is relaxed, the backside of the head is relaxed, the top of the head is relaxed. Your right shoulder is relaxed, your left shoulder is relaxed, your right arm is relaxed, your left arm is relaxed. Your right elbow is relaxed, your left elbow is relaxed. Your ar, uh, right hand is relaxed, your left hand is relaxed. Your right hip is relaxed, your left hip is relaxed. Your right thigh is relaxed, your left thigh is relaxed. Your right kneecap is relaxed, your left kneecap is relaxed. Your right wall part of the leg is relaxed, your le, left wall part of the leg is relaxed. Your right foot is relaxed, your left foot is relaxed. All the body is fully, completely relaxed. And then bring your attention to your intention, your South Kappa, your three affirmation or one information, but you repeat it three times in your head. Your I am statement. And, um, you slowly deepen the breath. Begin to deep this breath with the belly, upper chest and top of the crown, take a deep inhale through the nose. And you can open the mouth slowly exhale. You can start to wake up slowly the body, you can start to make a micro movement of your ankles with your wrist, with your toes, with your fingers. You can bring your heat together and make it heat, put your eyes to relax your eyes. Take a three deep breath. Extend your arms above the head, extend all your body as you wake up in the morning. Very slowly, very mindfully, you can come to, come to the sitting position again. Very slowly, very mindfully, you complete our session today with our scan body meditation. So you can sit and cross leg, take a deep breath, release through the mouth. Thank you so much to join me today for this full breath Pranayam session with so much exercise and final relaxation with yoga nidra. It was kind of mix-up, put all together that you learn, thank you so much, and I see you in the next session.